It is now nine o'clock and we will call the meeting to order. We'll first stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meetings today will be held in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. I'm going to ask everyone to please turn off your cellphones so you won't be embarrassed like I was yesterday at a meeting. So, um, the Open Meetings Act is located on the back wall of the building, out the room. Uh, we will start with calling the role for the Board of Equalization.
Good morning Commissioners. Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha. Mr. Chairman.
Here. Uh, we have approval of the minutes, the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, September 25th, 2012, and a call for a meeting set Tuesday, October 16th, 2012, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls of increased, uh, our increased values on property. We need a motion?
Motion to approve A and B. I mean, B and C, sorry.
We have a motion, a second, call for the vote. Next, we have citizen comments. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to be heard for a maximum of three minutes on any topic not on the agenda as it relates to the Board of Equalization. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard as it relates to the Board of Equalization? Seeing none, we will go through resolutions. There are four of them. Uh, on item E, we need to with, um, to lay over item CAC 12106 for Pilgrim OEDC, item CAC 12110 for Salem House, something group, a development group, there we go, and CAC 12131, Bisga Inc. So if we can remove those three items and, um, does anybody, does anybody want to take these separately or can we take them together?
I would move the approval of item E, less CAC 12106, 12110, and 12131.
Motion approved.
And this is on item E. Call for the vote. Next, we'll take item F, Certified Assessments Correcting, Correction Reflecting Correction in the Values of Approve, For and Approval. There are no items that I know of that we need to pull from this one.
I would move approval for this, plusings of items F, G, and H.
Second. We have a motion to approve F, G, and H. Call for the vote. One is a pill of penit, of penalty on personal property for Omaha Marriott Hotel, East Omaha, Nebraska. Yes, Mike?
If I may, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor's Office. In, in taking these appeals, I and J, um, and with respect to I, the protest indicates, uh, the person filing the protest says he or she mailed the, uh, return on May 1.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Uh, what we have is a, an envelope postmarked, uh, May 4 of 2012.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner. Commissioner. Commissioner.
Um, I have a lot of trouble believing that the, the mailing got done on May 1 and the
Commissioner. 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 Commissioner.
post office took four days to get around and whacking it with a postmark stamp.
Commissioner. 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 Commissioner.
So we would recommend denial of that protest.
Commissioner. Commissioner. Commissioner.
On the second one, J, um, this entity has provided us some additional mailing information
Commissioner. 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 Commissioner.
that does look like you hit the post office, uh, in time to have only a 10% rather than
Commissioner. 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 Commissioner.
a 25% penalty.
Commissioner. Commissioner.
So our recommendation here would be to reduce the penalty to 25% that we aired in applying
Commissioner. 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 Commissioner.
the larger amount.
Commissioner.
Second.
Commissioner.
Are we, are we taking I and J together?
Commissioner. 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 Commissioner.
Okay.
Commissioner. Commissioner.
So I, I, our recommendation would be to deny, J would be to reduce to 10%.
Commissioner. 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 Commissioner.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Uh, we have a motion and a second.
Commissioner. Commissioner. Commissioner.
Call for the vote.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner. 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 Commissioner.[515.12][515.12][S04. Now, we will, uh, convene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Call for the roll. Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Yes. Commissioner. 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 Next, we have approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, September 25th, 2012. And, uh, then we have approval of claims submitted for payment process, processed through Tuesday, October 9th, 2012. A complete listing is on file in the office of the County Clerk Controller and available on the Douglas County Clerk Controller's webpage, which is listed on the screen. Shall move for approval. We have a motion and a second for items A and B. Call for the vote. Next, we have the consent agenda. Items A through E, there are a total of five items. Commissioners, is there anything anyone wants to pull for discussion? I see nothing. Motion approved. Second. We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda, A through E. Call for the vote. Next, we have a number of recognitions and proclamations. First, I will call on Commissioner Borgeson for item A.
Thank you. Um, this resolution is proclaiming the month of October as Cyber Security Awareness Month, and, um, I'm going to read the resolution even though it's kind of lengthy because this is a pretty big project that, um, we're taking on and you'll find out why. Uh, whereas counties recognize the vital role that the Internet and information technology play in their county staffs and residents' daily lives, and whereas counties understand that critical sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems to support financial services, energy, technology, communications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems, and whereas Internet users and the nation's information infrastructure face an increasing threat of malicious cyber attack, loss of privacy from spyware and adware, and significant financial and personal privacy losses due to identity theft and fraud. And whereas the National Association of Counties President, Chris Rogers, has established cybersecurity awareness as a principal focus of his term and is encouraging the nation's county governments to enhance their cybersecurity efforts and encourage their citizens to adopt secure online practices. And whereas the Stop Think Connect Campaign is a national effort coordinated by a coalition of private companies, nonprofits, and government organizations to help all digital citizens stay safer and more secure online. And whereas the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center is designated by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security as a key resource for cyber threat prevention, protection, response, and recovery for the nation's state, local, and territorial and tribal governments. And whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role, and awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of Douglas County's information infrastructure and economy. And whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and the National Cyber Security Alliance, Alliance have declared October as National Cyber Security Awareness Month, and all citizens are encouraged to visit their sites along with our site, the Douglas County website, to learn about cybersecurity and put the knowledge into practice into their home, school, workplace, and businesses. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby proclaims the month of October 2012 as Cyber Security Awareness Month in Douglas County dated the second day of October 2012. And I would move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
If I could, there's, um, uh, many ideas on these websites if you look at them, and there's also a, um, social media, whoever uses Twitter and Facebook, they have things that you can post every day on those, um, on your pages just to get the word out about this. But again, with it being Chris's, Commissioner Rogers', one of his initiatives for this year, we're really taking an active part. We participated in the kickoff yesterday, um, of the national kickoff of the aware, of the month's awareness of it. So it's pretty exciting stuff. So take a look at the websites.
Thanks. And for item B, I'm going to call on Commissioner Tusha.
Thank you. I have a couple of gentlemen, if you'd like to come down to the podium, please, here from Steamfitters and Plumbers Local 464. If you'd like to introduce yourselves, I have a resolution here that I would like to read.
Uh, I am Mark Andresek, Business Manager, Steamfitters and Plumbers Local 464. Dave Johnson, Business Agent for 464.
Brad Bird, Financial Secretary, Treasurer for Local 464.
Thank you, gentlemen. First of all, I'm going to read the resolution and afterwards I'd like you to explain a little bit about what you're going to be doing this Saturday. Whereas on Saturday, October 6th, 2012, Steamfitters and Plumbers Local 464 will be hosting the kickoff for their annual Heats On Project. And whereas this project, which will be held for the 25th year in Omaha, consists of servicing, heating, and air conditioning equipment for underprivileged and elderly residents who reside in the Omaha Consebluffs area. And whereas the Steamfitters and Plumbers Local 464 members hope to visit 100 to 150 households this year. And whereas the Steamfitters and Plumbers Local 464 has won several awards for the program, which is an opportunity for the union members to give back to the community. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby congratulates the Steamfitters and Plumbers Local 464 on the 25th anniversary of the Heats On Project and further wishes the Steamfitters and Plumbers for all the best for our very successful project this year, dated the second day of October 2012, and I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. If we could have a vote.
So would you like to explain a little bit to the public of what you gentlemen do?
Uh, what we do is, uh, our service sector, our service techs donate their time on a Saturday. Uh, we usually have anywhere from 50 to 60 service techs who donate their time, and the contractors that they work for donate their trucks and their material to go out and check furnaces for elderly and underprivileged people in the city of Omaha and outlying areas. Uh, we go and check and make sure that their furnaces are going to fire properly for the winter season coming up. We check batteries and smoke detectors and change them out and, uh, actually, anything else they ask us to do. I just got a call yesterday, somebody's, or stove wasn't working correctly, wanted to know if we could look at that for them too, so we, we're going to do that for them also, so.
Awesome.
It's, uh, our guys love doing it. They, they can't wait to go out there and it just gives them a good feeling to go out and help the community, so we're, we're very excited about doing it.
Well, I want to thank you, gentlemen. I know I've been involved with this, uh, you know, to stop down and congratulate everybody on when you do this for the last couple of years that I've been on the board. And I really, totally, on behalf of all the citizens, I appreciate exactly what you guys are doing. I know, I know you do it on your own time and sometimes they miss the Nebraska game, but I really, really.
We try to schedule it around that, but sometimes.
I know, I know, you do. But I, I just want to say thank you. Thank you so much for doing this for us. I really appreciate it.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I want to add my two cents too. I'm really glad that Pam put this on the agenda. Thank you, Pam, for doing this.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Uh, it is really great work that you do, and, and I've had several constituents who have benefited from your generosity. Uh, it is just real typical of, uh, union people and of Omaha union people. Uh, you really get in there and perform and really, really do good things for our community. So many times you just don't get noticed, and that's why I'm so glad Pam had you down this morning. So keep up the good work. Uh, Ann and I will be out there for those pancakes and sausage, so.
All right.
One of my favorite breakfasts, I'll tell you that. Thanks a lot, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very.
And we'd like to shake your hands if you'd like to come up, please.
Yeah.
That's right, it's going to be cold on Saturday.
Thank you again, my dear.
And you're right, they do it very enthusiastically.
And I'm thinking for coming down and thanks for this.
Thanks again.
And the resolution. So, thank you, my dear. Thanks, guys.
That and $10 will get you a cup of coffee. Thanks a lot.
Next, we have a resolution inviting all county employees and the public to attend the 100th anniversary celebration of the, uh, opening of the Douglas County Courthouse on October 20th, 2012. And this is brought forward by the County Government Awareness Commission. Uh, who would like to take this?
Um, if I could start off, just so, give the background of how this actually came to being. Um, in our national publication, there's a little, um, story each month about what is in your seal, your county seal. And, um, we, uh.
We were puzzled.
We were puzzled. And, um, so we, we started down, uh, the road on that, and, um, that will be part of our celebration that we, um, do. But Commissioner Tusha brought to the board, or to the committee, um, the actual anniversary of the courthouse and, um, kind of asked the government awareness committee if we could tackle that, um, uh, project, and so we said sure. And so she has kind of taken the ball and ran with it and has a lot of activities planned for that day, and so, um, as her pardon, and I'll let her explain all the good stuff that's going to happen that day.
I'm just going to take two seconds out and read the resolution real quick. Whereas October 1st, 2012 was the 100-year anniversary of the opening of the Douglas County Courthouse. And whereas Douglas County will hold 100-year anniversary celebration on Saturday, October 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the courthouse. And whereas among the many activities scheduled for that day will include music, antique cars, courtroom tours, and the unveiling of the new Douglas County seal. And whereas all county employees and the public are encouraged to attend this 100-year anniversary celebration. Now therefore be it resolved by this county board, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby invites all county employees and the public to attend the 100-year anniversary celebration of the opening of the Douglas County Courthouse on October 20th, 2012, dated the second day of October, 2012, and I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. And Pam, do you want to speak about the replica of the courthouse we have in our offices right now?
Yeah, we do have, actually, I see Jerry Leahy back there. Jerry, would you come to the podium, please? I would like Jerry to explain a little bit about the replica, but in the meantime, while he's coming down here, this is awesome. 100 years of our beautiful architect courthouse, and we've got lots of activities, lots of fun. Thanks to Mary Ann for putting this on the County Government Awareness Committee. Everybody come down, enjoy it, rain or shine, we're going to have a grand old time to celebrate 100 years. Jerry, would you like to explain about our little courthouse?
Good morning. Jerry Leahy, Public Properties. Uh, there's always a story with, uh, with an item like this, and the story goes something like this. This model of the courthouse has been floating around, I think the warehouse and purchasing, purchasing department, and there's been comment after comment over the years about where, where did this model come from? Who, who built it? Was it built by a county employee? No. So the best I can guess from some of the comments in the past is that, I don't know if, if it was because Dan Lynch was chairman of the board at the time, but somebody presented it to Dan, and I don't know if it was the family, and Dan handed it over to Bill Cuff, who was the purchasing agent, for storage. So it's floated around, so when the, when the 100-year came up, it was a natural that we resurrect this model and display it, uh, now in the Commissioner's office and then have that, uh, on hand the day, the day of the celebration. It, it's so amazing because it's almost to scale. And, uh, there are two postcards, uh, that were inside the model, and if you look at the back of the cards, there's measurements that the man was writing down when he, when he built it. So it, it's quite a thing. It's, uh, it's something that's, uh, uh, just an ideal item for display for this, uh, this 100 years, so, um, that's all I know about it, but it's, I, I wish I knew who it was. I wish that some family would come forward and say, "That was my grandpa," or "That was my uncle," or something, but, um, it's quite a thing.
What if I just take claim for it?
That would be rejected. No, um, no offense, Mr. Chair.
He's offended.
Uh, I've kind of guarded this thing for a while, so I need to protect it. What I would like to do it, after the fact of this 100-year celebration, is to have a discussion through one of the committees about where to place this, to, uh, house it, and, uh, one of the thoughts was the, uh, historical society, uh, possibly, and then at times bring it back, but that's for another topic, I guess.
Commissioner.
So, thanks, Commissioner.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Do we at least know or think we know that it was someone from here that did it?
No, that's the odd part of it. It, the, the story is it was an inmate. No.
I, I refuse to take credit.
But, but the question would be, if you're in jail, how would you have made, made this model? You're supposed to be in your cell. So.
Rec time.
Well, or, I thought maybe it was a, a short stay, a week, hopefully, or less, and he got religion, went home and, uh, started to build this model. I don't know, but.
Well, maybe, um, the next time you have your discussion with, um, Mike Kelly, because he's going to do a couple of articles, has done one already on this, that, um, maybe there's just a little, um, article specific about the.
Good idea.
Model, and maybe somebody will, you know, see it and maybe comment on it. I don't know.
It's possible.
Put a picture of it in there.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Awesome. Well, if you haven't seen it, please stop at the Commissioner's office and see it. Jerry's, uh, teamwork build a nice pucks of glass case around it to keep it secure and safe, and, and so, and it is, it is a beautiful piece of work, so, and it will also be on display at our 100-year anniversary. And again, please, please, you know, October 20th, 92, everybody please, you know, invite family, friends, coworkers, everybody. This is going to be a great celebration to celebrate our 100-year anniversary.
Okay.
Would Dan Lynch or Bill Green know anything? Have you asked, talked to him?
Uh, I, I've, I've talked to Al Hogan, I've talked, and Al's can talk to Dan, and I've talked to John Lemay, and it, it, I just can't pin it down, and nobody can.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
Maybe they build it.
Thanks, Jerry.
All right, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. And no one else wishes to speak? I'll call on Mary Ann for the next, uh, Commissioner Borgeson for the next.
Yes, the, we have busy, uh, month, and we're not even done yet, uh, with, uh, things that we could be bringing forward, but, um, this is, um, uh, whereas in 2009, the Dignity and Respect Campaign was launched as a community initiative to encourage and promote the message of inclusion, beginning with the core belief that everyone deserves to be treated with dignity and respect. Whereas the Dignity and Respect Campaign is founded on the basic principle that people should treat others the way they themselves would want to be treated. It begins with individuals taking the Dignity and Respect Pledge. I will treat everyone with dignity and respect. And whereas showing dignity and respect for others through positive role modeling behaviors such as embracing diversity, promoting inclusion in the workplace, and encouraging anti-bullying campaigns in schools serves to enhance equality of life for all residents of our community. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby proclaims the month of October as Dignity and Respect Month, with the goal of promoting inclusion, appreciation, and value to all in the workplace, schools, and the entire Douglas County community. Be it further resolved that this board further encourages all citizens to take the Dignity and Respect Pledge, participate in local awareness activities, and make dignity and respect a part of the fabric of our community, adopted the second day of October 2012. And, um, I would make a motion to approve. And if I could, um, to me, you know, it's easy to sit up here and read words on paper, um, but I really hope that people take, um, what is on paper to heart and take the pledge of I will treat everyone with dignity and respect to heart. Um, we have a, uh, violence issue in this community. We have a bullying issue in our schools and workplaces. workplaces, and to me, this is, again, just words, but I think if we take a stand and really, a hard stand on it, we could start to make some change. So I really hope people take this to heart and talk about it during this month that carries on throughout the year, and again, not just this month, but lots of activities will be taking place during this month, and so I ask all of you to really take this to heart and pass the word along. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We could call for the vote. Next, we have citizen comments. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to be heard at this time, for a maximum of three minutes on any topic not on the agenda as it relates to the governance of Douglas County. Is there anyone who wishes to approach the board? Seeing none, we have a presentation. Again, I will call on Commissioner Tusha.
So Pam, I think I spoke too soon on the last time. Can I?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
When I was starting my babble about the courthouse thing, the seal part of it was really emphasized in this agenda item, but again, we had, as a Government Awareness Committee, had opted to partake in presenting our national seal details to the magazine, national magazine, and we didn't know what they were. We had five different seals that were never really adopted by any county board, and we just didn't have a real concrete understanding of what our seal was, where it came from, and so we decided to launch this campaign and, or contest, and again, I did it through the community, or County Government Awareness Committee, and I'll let Commissioner Tusha, because she chaired that activity, give you the details of how we came about where we are today, getting to where we are today.
Thank you, and again, I have to thank Commissioner Borgeson for putting this on the County Government Awareness Committee, because, so we have five different seals out there, no explanation, no rhyme or reason, no dates on when they were done, so we chose to put out a competition for a new Douglas County seal. We had a total of 26 different seals that were given to our office. We, the committee, this Douglas County Seal Committee narrowed it down to the five finalists, which I'm gonna have Karen show you here in a second, but during the anniversary, out of five, we will be choosing the top, first, second, and third place of the seal, and of course, the first place, we will carry that on for our new seal, but we will also have on display all of the other 23 seals for everybody to see, because I think it's important that, to find out, to see the artistic value that we have in Douglas County, and then the meanings behind all the different seals. I think it's just awesome, and I think everybody will be pleased with everything. So we'll show you our five finalists. Thank you, Karen.
Can we just slip them on a table?
Yeah, just go ahead, yep.
Claire, is that a cow?
That's a cow.
Did you draw that?
I like that.
And the last one.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
And again, we, the seven commissioners will choose the first, second, and third out of these five finalists, and again, we'll have it on, October 16th, actually, we'll be announcing the winner of this, but on the 20th, again, we'll have first, second, and third persons who did the drawings, to ask them to come to the celebration to unveil their seals. And again, we'll have the other 23 on site for everyone to see, and thank you, everyone, for this.
Yeah, pretty exciting.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I want to take a moment again to thank Commissioners Borgeson and Tusha for doing this. I think it's really great, I don't know who all else was involved in it, but leave it to the women on the board to get something moving like this. It's really great to see this, and I really appreciate this. This was a lot of hard work, and ran into you the other day, and you're working on it again, so I really appreciate it. This is really very, very good. I just am delighted to see this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, there are no public hearings today, so we'll advance to committee discussions. Finance Committee, Commissioner Duda and Commissioner Morgan. Nothing as presented. Administrative Services, Commissioner Tusha.
Nothing today. I think I've opened my mouth quite a bit today, so...
Nothing out of the normal.
No, that's her.
Child and Youth Services, I have a note here, there will not be a Child and Youth Service Standing Committee meeting on Tuesday, October 2nd, 2012. The meeting will be held instead on Tuesday, October 9th, 2012, at 2:00 p.m., and there's a change of room. It'll not be where it normally is, it will be in room 702. Community Services, Commissioner Duda.
Nothing.
And Criminal Justice, Commissioner Boyle.
All quiet on the home front.
And Health and Human Services, Commissioner Borgeson.
Nothing.
I have Human Resources, the weekly personnel report from Civil Services as presented. Legislative issues, we will be discussing some, and the other business of the Human Resource Meeting today, and there will be a Human Resource Committee meeting following this meeting by perhaps 20 minutes after this meeting concludes, in room 903. We will be discussing the process of selecting a new CAO and putting out the request for proposals or the job application. So that's a good meeting to attend, and there is no need for an executive session.
Sweet.
So we can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We'll meet 903.
Right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, and we have a second. Call for the vote. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Oh, I've been asked to mention that there is no meeting next week because of Columbus Day. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Work for a new country.
Thank you all. Thank you all.